Can I get a mover and second to come out of closed? Councillor Griffin, Councillor Connors. And we'll call the vote.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Griffin?
Yes.
Councillor Connors? Councillor Bachmann?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried, thank you.
And can I get a mover and second for the CS1 option for Central Elgin former cycling lands? Councillor Connors? Mayor Sloan?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads move by Councillor Connors, seconded by Mayor Sloan, that the Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to pause efforts to negotiate a purchase agreement with Infrastructure Ontario for the former hospital lands and instead that the Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to pursue the acquisition of the former hospital lands by A) seeking sponsorship from a cabinet minister for a business case to the Treasury Board of Cabinet and B) subject to securing sponsorship, preparing and submitting a business case that proposes Central Elgin purchase the land on terms consistent with those set out in Schedule 1, including a low or zero purchase price, deferred payment until resale to a developer partner and providing profit net of cost to the province; that the Minister of Infrastructure be formally requested to refrain from placing the lands on the open market until the Treasury Board has rendered a decision on Central Elgin's proposed business case and request that Infrastructure Ontario continue work to repair the property for future development; and that the Office of the Provincial Land and Development Facilitator, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, be requested to reengage in the hospital lands project to support faster housing development.
Okay. Call the vote?
Sorry, I just have one more question. Should we not wait to vote on this until we hear from Minister Flack?
Through your chair. I think that the question is that we need approval to try to find a sponsor. So that's what we're looking for first. So we wouldn't be hearing from Minister Flack as to sponsorship until we have the permission to go and try to seek that.
No, sorry, I meant when Minister Flack meets with the CAO and the mayor. Shouldn't we be waiting to see what update that is with regards to his meeting with Minister Serma last week before we move forward with anything with the Treasury Board? Or even finding a sponsor?
Mayor Sloan, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. So I think, Councillor Graham, I spoke to Minister Flack on the phone on Thursday or Friday and we told him about tonight's meeting. We told him that our next steps would be looking for a sponsor. At that point, he knew and the CAO and I made it very clear to him what we were doing so that he knew and had an idea. So he's well informed about what we're doing. As I said, the meeting that he had with Minister Serma last week was not a long one. It wasn't scheduled, it was around the time of a caucus meeting. So I don't think there was anything that he would have to give today that he didn't have to give on Friday. So that's what I can offer the conference.
I'm just going to ask procedurally, I think we have to, if we're going to continue this conversation, we'd have to go back into closed. Councillor Graham, did you have more questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, are we okay to call the vote now?
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Griffin?
Yes.
Councillor Connors?
Yes.
Councillor Bachmann?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried, thank you.
Can I get a mover and second to adjourn until we reconvene? Oh, okay, we're going to adjourn till seven o'clock now. Thank you.
Hi, Norm.
Hi, Andrew. How are you?
Pretty good, thanks. You working today, or is it too rainy?
Well, we were working and then some unplanned events happened. We had a truck that got stuck.
Just, I can't tell if we're live, so just, sorry. Hold on.
Had a truck that got stuck and we had to go get a tractor and it was like 30 miles away and it just, it took a lot longer. It happened around four o'clock and I'm like, oh my God. So, we got it unstuck, but I thought I better make one of these meetings here. So.
Okay, I think we're just gonna.
Yep.
Welcome. We'll resume the council meeting now at 7:02. And I'll invite Mary Lou to, Mary Lou to present her presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Good evening. My name is Mary Lou Tanner. I am President of NPG Planning Solutions. And we are working with you on the planning for the hospital lands. And I'm here this evening to give you an update on the vision workshop that we had and the results of it. And you have on your agenda as well, the report from that workshop. Oh, there we go. So just want to refresh everyone's memory about why we're doing this project. As we know, the hospital has been closed and the province of Ontario is proposing to divest itself of ownership of the lands, which includes the hospital buildings potentially, as well as the vacant lands in behind that were the farm. It's an opportunity for Central Elgin. It's actually a really important opportunity to do upfront thinking about what the lands are going to be, how they're going to be developed, and what you want to achieve in terms of building, what is essentially a brand new community. There is growth coming, as we know, with the VW battery plant, including the jobs that are going to be at the plant, as well as the spinoff jobs that are going to come from that. And so, at this point, it is really the time to do that upfront thinking, which we started earlier this year with you, about what this community can and should be, and how it should be developed. This vision report is setting the first important milestone in this process in understanding how those lands will develop, what you want to achieve from the development of those lands, and what it contributes to the overall Central Elgin community. It will ultimately, and should be, what we call a complete community, so has a full range of uses, parks, schools, commercial areas, a lot of housing, places where you can walk, places where you can buy, protection of the natural heritage system and the archaeological sites on the lands, should be mixed use, both commercial and residential, not just a single residential use. And it should be sustainable in terms of reflecting the natural heritage of the area, protecting the natural heritage system elements and the features that create that system, and also really thinking forwardly about how the community is going to serve the residents of that community, as well as the broader Central Elgin community, because it is connected to Norman Lyndale and the city of St. Thomas. So, the reason we're starting with vision is, we really wanted to capture your thinking about your expectations and your goals, and what you want to achieve in terms of what this community is going to look like. It is a big piece of property that is a lot of land, several hundred acres in size, and it gives you a lot of opportunity to address a lot of the goals that you have for the entire community, but also for this specific piece of property. So it does establish your priorities for the lands and what you want to see in the future. Later this year, we will take the vision report and the elements of the vision report, and we'll create what we call a directions report, which starts to tease out in more detail the specific elements of it. For example, when we talk about housing, what does housing mean in the Central Elgin context? What are we looking at in terms of the range of uses? How do we make sure people have housing choice in this community? That's but one example, and we'll be bringing that back to you later this year. And then, in order to bring this vision and the directions to fruition, there is an amendment required to your official plan. It's going to do some administrative things, but really, it's going to set the development framework for these lands, including incorporating the specific policies to make sure that the vision is realized. So, the purpose of the vision report is really capturing the work that we did with you earlier this year in January in the vision workshop that we had. It takes what we heard from you. We've used a number of other documents that I'm going to touch on in a moment that are also important to informing the vision, and gives us the framework to create the policy directions. And the policy directions will then give us the framework to create the official plan amendment, which will include mapping of the lands. So you can see in a map how the neighborhood is going to look and how it's going to feel. I mentioned just now that there were other elements that we needed to look at. So we did take a look at the existing conditions on the land. A lot of it is agriculture. There are some agricultural buildings. There's some natural heritage features as well. And we know from other reports that we've seen that there's some archaeological sites as well. No planning in any municipality in Ontario is done without paying attention to what's going on provincially in the provincial planning statement, which is a housing-focused provincial planning statement. And that certainly is in line with your thinking and the need for housing in this community to support the job growth that is coming more generally within the area. The Elgin County Official Plan and the new Elgin County Official Plan, both of which talk about the importance of housing, as well as developing complete communities, your strategic plan in addressing affordability, as well as sustainability, and the Central Elgin Official Plan, which was last consolidated in 2023. But it hasn't been brought up to deal with some of the newer things that have come along, but it does provide a really good foundation for how we can build into your official plan what this new community is going to do. And finally, and most importantly, the vision workshop that we had earlier this year. There are a number of elements that are the basis of the vision and the guiding principles. When we met in January, we talked a lot about growth and what was happening in this general area, not just job growth from the VW plant, but also the spinoff jobs, the need for more housing and housing for those workers, as well as housing affordability generally in the community. We also talked about the need to make sure that there's a full range of housing in this area and ensuring that it's not just a range of low-density housing, but that people will have choice in the housing that they want. We talked about healthy communities and the important principles of healthy communities, protecting the natural heritage system, ensuring that we're providing a really solid road and transportation network, and ensuring that the people have the ability to move around by their choice of transportation mode, whether it is vehicles, or walking, or cycling, and even making sure that the lands are transit-ready. We also talked about the site context, the proximity to St. Thomas, which I mentioned earlier, the proximity to not just agricultural lands, but there are some aggregate operations nearby and paying attention to those, but really also capturing the agricultural history of the community in how we think about moving forward with development of these lands, and ensuring that there's really good connectivity, but there's also a respect that there are active farms south of these lands and some to the east as well. And then we talked about the policy context, and that includes transportation that I spoke about, but also cultural heritage and recognizing the heritage of the area, as well as addressing climate change. And there are a lot of opportunities to deal with climate change through development. It's things like ensuring the stormwater ponds function properly, ensuring we're addressing how rainwater is captured, but also very, very important details like how parks are designed using native species for local trees. So it gets at a very high level, addressing climate change and climate resilience, and driving it down through those directions and into the official plan amendment. So this is the vision that we created in the document, the team that worked on this, so Catherine and Mary Ellen and Carrie and Jeff and Monica as well. And it is this. Central Elgin's newest community will be a thriving and inclusive place to call home. Designed for all ages and generations, it will offer a diverse range of affordable and accessible housing options. This community will promote healthy lifestyles and environmental stewardship, anchored by a traditional main street with vibrant local businesses. It will feature parks and community services that prioritize people and their day-to-day needs. The community will create jobs to support financial sustainability in Central Elgin. There are four guiding principles in the document. I'm not going to read these, because I'm going to take you through each one of them in sequence. So let's start with distinctive community. It was really important in our conversations that this new community was distinctive. It reflected Central Elgin, but provided the opportunity to create neighborhoods and community. And that is the elements of community that we talked about, the traditional main street, the full range of housing in the Central Elgin context. So if there's an apartment building, it's reflective of what's going on around, and not necessarily what you'd see in a more metropolitan area. We talked about the landscape and architectural elements, and I touched on it earlier, reflecting the agricultural roots of the community, and making sure that there is that space. and making sure that there is that spatial connectivity and cues in the, in the design of buildings and the design of the streets and the parks to reflect the community's agricultural roots and the history of the area. Livable and affordable community, it is very much about housing and providing housing at a range of densities that are attainable for a diversity of families and people of differing generations, whether it's by life stage or income or both. And ensuring that people have the opportunity in this community to find housing, enjoy living there and transition through their lifestyle into either larger housing as their families grow or downsizing into smaller communities. And by providing that range of housing, we are creating those opportunities for people to age in neighborhood is how we describe it. The importance of community services came up and it is an important element of creating a really, really wonderful community. It is about parks, but it's also about thinking about community spaces. We did talk about options in January for different community services such as community facilities and ensuring that's provided. We also talked about daycare centers and childcare and schools as well. It's really important that there is a network of safe and attractive parks and not just that there are parks, but they are accessible to people through the street system and it's easy and convenient for people to walk through them, to them, excuse me. At several hundred acres, it should not be one large park. That is going to create a circumstance where people can't necessarily get there unless they drive or it's just going to be overwhelmed because it's going to be so attractive to everyone in the community. So we want to make sure that we're providing a range of parks on the landscape and ensuring that it, it is within a five to 10 minute walk of where most people live. And we talked an awful lot about a mix of uses in, in January and the importance of retail services and meeting people's daily needs with local services such as a pharmacy, the daycare center we talked about, corner store, grocery store, those types of things, all within a traditional main street or downtown design as opposed to large scale, big box or large plaza type retail development. We talked about sustainable community and we start with the importance of financial sustainability in Central Elgin. It is really important that we have a lens of how this is going to contribute to the municipalities' financial sustainability, but also how growth is going to be paid for and ensuring to the greatest extent possible within the laws of Ontario, that growth pays for growth. And that is partly in this official plan and setting the directions and the policies, but it's also other companion documents like the development charges by law. We want to make sure that we are efficiently using the resources that we have and ensuring that the landscape is designed to reflect the natural landscape and that we are protecting the natural heritage features and the natural heritage system and they provide connectivity as well, whether it is through design on the landscape in the parks or providing trails that support people moving through it and connectivity to the trail system. We talked a lot about the importance of the urban tree canopy and it is an element that we can achieve through the directions and the official plan amendment. It's also important through urban design guidelines as well in ensuring that site design and your policies for new development address how tree planting is going to be taken care of and what the tree canopy is going to look like. And incorporating green development standards for climate resiliency. That's a lot of how we deal with stormwater. The tree canopy absolutely contributes to that, but it's also about creating, you know, a good network of sidewalk connectivity to the trails and protecting the natural heritage system as well. Finally, the importance of connectivity in a connected community. We talked about the importance of transit readiness in this community and we do that in a number of ways through the street design and making sure the streets are designed for potentially future transit, but also making sure the densities are sufficient so that the transit system can be supported and understanding where people are going to be going from and where they're going to be going to. We want to make sure that there's really good connectivity through the entire neighborhood. That is of course through the street system, but also its sidewalks, cycling, connectivity to the trail system and connectivity to the transit system. And we talk about complete streets in the Central Elgin context and we want to make sure that we're being really clear that this is about people walking and cycling, but it's also about people using cars and making sure the interaction is safe for all and that we provide appropriate on-street parking as well. The next steps in this project are these. So we are here tonight with the vision report and your adoption of the vision report will give us the direction to move forward. We, we propose to be back in September to take that vision report and as I said, tease out the, in greater detail the elements that we want in, in the directions report, things like housing and transportation and infrastructure and trails and natural heritage, getting into a more granularity of what this means and some of the options for you to consider. At that point, we're really going to be starting the engagement plan and process with members of the community. We look forward to having those conversations with them and bringing their feedback into this directions report. We find that when people have something in front of them to consider, we get richer conversations and, and deeper meaning in the input. As I said earlier, there is an official plan amendment required to your official plan. From the directions report, we'll create the, the official plan amendment. So the specific policies for the development in this area, there will be at least one map that lays out the land use plan. There may be more depending on the level of information we need to provide. We just want to make sure the maps are clear and easy to read, so they're not too cluttered with a lot of detail. But that will be the official plan amendment. And again, we'll be back to engage with you and the community to hear people's feedback and ensure that we're incorporating it and we anticipate that that will occur in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. So you will be able to make a decision on that towards the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. I believe that is it for me. It is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Can I get a mover and seconder for CAO zero six two five? Counselor Connors? Mayor Sloan? And anybody have any questions for Mary Lou? Very thorough report. Thank you.
Thank you.
You okay to call the vote, Delaney?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Mayor Sloan, that council approve the vision and guiding principles set out in Schedule One and direct the CAO to develop directions as the next step in developing the official plan amendment and to prepare and implement a public engagement strategy to consult on the directions this fall. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to CAO zero seven two five and I'll invite. Want to speak to that?
Thank you. Through the deputy mayor, this report is to provide counsel with an update on the project. I do want to note that there is a typo in the recommendation. It should read the office of the, now I'm going to say it wrong, my apologies. The Office of the Provincial Land and Development Facilitator. My apologies in the first line, I got the words mixed up with that, but happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Mayor Sloan? Counselor Connors? Questions? Seems pretty straightforward.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Mayor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Connors. The correspondence be sent to the Office of the Provincial Land and Development Facilitator, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, requesting recovery of costs expended by Central Elgin in support of the province's site preparation program for its former hospital lands and a commitment that future costs will be recovered. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
And that has carried.
Okay. Bylaw confirming the proceedings of council, bylaw two zero two five zero two seven, confirmation bylaw. Mover and seconder? Counselor Griffin? Counselor Connors?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaw twenty twenty-five twenty-seven be read a first time and passed. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Okay. Finally, adjournment motion? Mover and seconder? Counselor Watson? Counselor Connors?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the special meeting of council dated Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty-five be adjourned at seven twenty-two PM with the next council meeting to be scheduled for Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five at seven o'clock PM. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the delegations tonight and all the information that was shared and we'll see everybody next Monday. Good night.